I call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58, Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for listing and application. If we could all stand for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers to all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. First item on our agenda this morning, or this evening, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Ms. Warren?
Donna Warren, 27-8, South Meadow Village. I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Fantasy, Michael Malinowski, and Rick LeFond. And I just am so impressed with Mr. Fantasy's professionalism, how he treats people. And he's really done a lot at the Council on Aging in only a very short time. And I'm talking as a resident, but I know what he's done at the Council on Aging already, and I'm really thankful that he's been here with us this last six months. So I am in support of Mr. Fantasy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? All right. Seeing none. The next item on our agenda this evening is a discussion and possible vote on the hiring of a town administrator and to designate a subcommittee for the purpose of negotiating contract with the town administrator. Why don't we start maybe just by going around the room and getting people's thoughts on the interviews and the different applicants? And one particular piece of information before we start. One of the applicants, Mike McGovern, was a finalist in the Rainham position as well. I don't know if anyone had heard anything about that or not. I guess it could have been in some of the newspapers, but he has withdrawn his name from consideration for Rainham, so he is no longer interested in that position, just so folks know. So why don't we go along? Mr. Hoffman, would you like to start us off?
I'd actually like to go last, please.
Okay. Ms. Hewens?
We've been down this road several times, and I think that, to me, the most important thing right now is hiring someone. I think the finances, all three of the candidates, would be fine. They were town administrators, have been, will be. So that's not, to me, the issue. I think the issue now is that we need someone who has some kind of understanding of Carver and will provide us some stability and a sense of moving forward. And I believe that Bob Fantasy is that person.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Sure. Well, I haven't had the guest experience of working with Mr. Fantasy over the past few months. So I really looked at these three candidates. Obviously, thank you for the search committee for giving us three people that I think would do a fine job here. And I looked at them in various categories, both, you know, financial ability, what I think that had worked with personnel, the administrative strengths and weaknesses.
Mr. Carter, could you speak here to the microphone?
Sure. I looked at various components of their backgrounds with regards to administrative strengths, financial strengths. I must say that I never thought of a future town administrator having a legal background and getting two candidates with a legal background, I think, is a perk for the town. I think financially, some are stronger than others, but as long as we have a strong right arm financially here for whoever takes the position, you know, that, again, I think they'll all do well. I think what impressed me most was I did get to see Mr. Fantasy during town meeting, and I think, I guess if you're considering a position, you go through three days of town meeting with some challenging subjects during a new voting system administration, I think that's kind of baptism under fire. So I was impressed with Mr. Fantasy's performance, short as it is for me.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bogart?
Well, I, again, I take it seriously, and as you know, I'm not afraid to not vote. But I saw good in everybody. I did research. I thought about it a lot. I had concerns with two of them, and at this point, I am really comfortable with keeping Bob. I think he's great. My one concern with one of them was when I asked how long it would take to get back to residence, the immediate answer was depending on the time of year, it could take three weeks. To me, that, I was speechless at that. Residents deserve better. And with another candidate, while it's good to have diverse experience, I felt that economic development was too much of his focus, and I thought he might steer Carver in a direction that it may not want to go. So I would like to see Mr. Fantasy become our permanent town administrator.
Thank you. And I'll go, so you can go last, as you asked, Mr. Hoffman. And I guess, I was impressed with all three candidates. I felt that all three would be able to do a good job with the town of Carver. I was a little bit surprised, as Ms. Bogart's mentioned, that one of them mentioned that it could take a couple of weeks to get back to a resident. No matter what time of year it is, you have to respond, and I was surprised by that. I guess, as serving as chair last year, I had a lot of opportunity to work closely with Mr. Fantasy, and I was impressed by a number of things. I was impressed by the way he got involved in the budget process right away. He came in in the middle of the budget season and hit the ground running right away, together with our finance director, Ms. Moklin, and I thought that was very impressive. I was also impressed by the way he got involved right away in the planning for the North Carver project, which was a very detailed and complicated item, and he took the time right away to get up to speed. I was very impressed with that. I found him a pleasure to work with. I thought he did an excellent job with all the different department heads in town, and I really think he did a lot for the morale here in Town Hall. So I was very impressed with Mr. Fantasy, and I, as I said, I thought all three candidates works, and I really, I think all three would do a good job here in the town, but I favor Mr. Fantasy for the position. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Walsh and the committee for doing a great job. Three great candidates, like everyone has said. I had my top two, which I'm sure others had mentioned as well, and the one thing that did get me, and I think it got us all, was that getting back to the residents on email up to a couple of weeks, and then also have his assistant go through the requests and kind of prioritize. I thought that was kind of a sticking point for me personally. And it really came down to Mr. Fantasy and Mr. McGovern, to be honest, and they were pretty much equal. Bob had the personal experience here, but the biggest thing that I looked at was, in the six months that we've been, actually, January 2, not even six months, that the morale in Town Hall in all the departments has just changed dramatically. And personally, I wouldn't want, I don't want to take a chance that, I'm not saying anything bad about Mr. McGovern, he might step right in and do the same thing, but I just don't want to take that chance. I think Mr. Fantasy's done a great job. I was, as most of you know, I was the representative on the Capitol outlay for the Select Board, so I got to work with him and Sue Moklin on the budget. They both did a great job. Everyone knows what kind of pressure we were under. We weren't even sure if we were going to have it done in time. We might have to have a special town meeting, but none of that happened. We went through pretty smooth. Granted, two extra nights, but that was unfortunate, but we still did what we did. And again, what I'm trying to say in the long run is I agree that my choice would be Bob Fantasy as well.
All right. Well, hearing what I've heard so far, I would like to offer a motion that the town of Carver offer the permanent town administrator position to Robert Fantasy, and that we designate a subcommittee for the purpose of negotiating a contract with Mr. Fantasy.
I would like to make a motion that we offer the town administrator permanent position to Robert Fantasy Jr. And I want to add the comment that what really got me was how much he fell in love with this town.
I think so.
So.
All right.
Yes.
Is that official?
This is the official motion?
All right. I'll amend my motion to incorporate the junior and...
So I move that the Carver Select Board make a conditional offer of employment to Robert F. Fantasy Jr. for the position of Carver Town Administrator. This offer is conditioned, no, it's not conditional.
No, it's not. We've already done that. We don't need that because we've already done the background.
That was for the other people. So scratch that. What I said before.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we? Yes. Ms. Weston?
It would be conditional upon a negotiation of a contract.
If we negotiate, that's right. If we negotiate...
Condition, the negotiation of a contract.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Yay!
I would, Sarah, hang on, hang on one second. Hang on one second. So I would suggest that I think Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Hewens did a good job the last time in being a contracts subcommittee, and if you folks are willing, I would make a motion that Sarah Hewens and Jim Hoffman, once again, form our subcommittee to negotiate a contract with Mr. Fantasy. Are you both amenable to that? You have the time?
Oh, yes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, first of all, I don't want to assume anything. Does any, either one of you want to be involved in that? I don't want to...
No, that's why we go to discussion.
That's why I want to discuss. I have no problem doing it. I would enjoy doing that, but again, I want to open up to the two other members.
No, it's all you.
Okay. Just asking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tommy didn't get it. You went that close.
Congratulations, Mr. Fantasy. Thank you for all your hard work so far on behalf of the town. We certainly appreciate everything you've done so far. We look forward to working with you in the future. We have appointed a subcommittee to meet with you and negotiate a contract, and hopefully we'll have something to announce at our next Select Board meeting.
Okay. I want to thank the board for choosing me, and I assure you that I'll work diligently to make sure that I earn your trust and confidence, every one of you, and also the trust and confidence of the employees and the townspeople. That's my goal in this process, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And Ms. Weston, can you get an email off to the other two candidates that are thanking them for their interest in the town and that we appreciate it? All right. Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is the acceptance of a gift from AD Makepeace. It is a grant for $26,697 for two ATVs for the police department. Chief Dufly, would you like to speak regarding this?
Good evening, and thank you for a few minutes of your time. Congratulations, Mr. Fantasy.
Thank you.
So tonight, I get to talk to you about something that's not going to cost us money, so I'm happy about that. And I just, I want to take a few moments to recognize the outstanding work that Officer Foxon has put into this grant and to also recognize the generosity of the AD Makepeace Company for providing us with the money. Carver, as we all know, is a wooded town for the most part. There's a lot of paved roads, but there's a lot of off-road that we don't currently have the capability to patrol. We respond as best we can using the cruises that we have, but we don't have any ability to go into the woods and routinely patrol. We receive numerous complaints throughout the year about illegal ATV riding. That is trespassing, and it also sometimes causes damage to people's property. And we've also had to respond to places where people riding ATVs or dirt bikes have been injured. These ATVs will give us a capability that we don't currently have so that we can put officers into those areas and better interact with the public, educate them about where they can properly ride, enforce the law if need be, and respond to emergencies more effectively. We met with the representatives from AD Makepeace after Officer Foxon put together all the quotes and all the information, including a complete survey of all the towns around us that do have this capability and how they do it. And they were very agreeable with the idea and the concept and very easily gave us the money. So they've supported us with that, like you said, $26,697, which is enough to buy the two ATVs and a trailer to store those ATVs in. The reason the trailer is important, we could store them in the outbuilding with the new station, but the trailer will provide us the ability to store them, keep them plugged in so they're charged. And we have two police officers on our SEMLEC, if you remember, that's a regional team, SEMLEC Search and Rescue Team, and that team goes out routinely and performs searches for missing people, sometimes in wooded environments, so these ATVs will also be able to use for that capability. Again, I think this is a great step moving forward. For a lot of years, at the tail end of Chief Mix's career, in the beginning of my career, we had ATVs on our Capitol expense, but as we moved forward, we recognized that purchasing cruises every year probably weren't going to get to a point where we were buying ATVs, so we took it off the request, but we were keeping an eye out for them. Officer Foxon got a chance to meet up with somebody from AD Makepeace on a call at AD Makepeace property, and he was questioned as to why we didn't have that capability. So Officer Foxon talked to him a little bit about it, and the gentleman indicated to him that AD Makepeace has a grant program that towns can apply to, which we have in the past for other things. But they had just recently, I think it was Wareham, just recently got a, Wareham Fire just recently got a UTV from this grant program. So he asked if it would be okay if we moved forward on it, and of course, we supported him in that idea. He did a great deal of work and was able to put this together and successfully win this grant award for us. So I just wanted to take a moment to bring it to your attention, get you guys to accept the gift, and, like you said, to recognize Officer Foxon's hard work and to recognize the generosity of AD Makepeace.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work put into that, so it's going to help.
And I do remember on your Capitol, you know, planes many, many years ago, that being on there and somehow getting away, so it's great that you were able to get this done.
We moved it out so many years, it just fell off, and we just never put it back on.
I just have one quick comment. Thank you, Officer Foxon, for your hard work. I recall when I was a conservation agent, we have a lot of off-road vehicles trespassing on the Cole property, even though it's posted. So this is a really great thing. If you want, I can tell you where they enter from. It's not the main gate.
I think we have an idea.
You probably do. Yeah. So thank you very, very much.
Question, just for clarity's sake, I called Chief Dufly earlier today to ask some questions. Clarity, when I asked you how often you thought you'd use them, did I understand you correctly when you said you thought it depended on what was in the budget for overtime stuff on weekends?
Yes. So we'll use this similar to what we used the boat, I think I talked to you about it this afternoon. We put the boat out on the weekends on overtime. We originally got that police boat with a grant as well, which paid money to put it out every weekend. That grant dried up for the money for that salary, so we use it as we can within the overtime budget. We have to make those decisions as we go. We're still not, I mean, we've got the naughty coming forward to put one more body on, one more police officer on next year, but we don't have enough officers on the street right now to just run this as a regular patrol. We would have to run this in addition to patrols, and we'd have to pay overtime for that.
So this would kind of be like the boat, where it would be there but not be a regular?
Right. These won't be assigned to regular patrol like a police car every day because we just don't have that level of staffing, but they will be used as we can and using the data that we have to show when we think the most problems are happening that they could interdict with, so.
So if Sarah knows someone's at the Cole property and she called 911, are you going to be able to send someone out there right then to go get them?
It will actually depend on the situation. We may have enough officers on the time. I can't promise that until we see what happens because we can't possibly put these out there in addition to the cruises that we have 24/7.
So it's not necessarily an on-call thing?
Right. No. It's going to be, there will be regular routine patrols with it, but they won't be scheduled like a normal Monday through Friday shift or a four-on-two-off shift. They'll be scheduled when we see the most calls, when we get the, looking at data to see when it makes most sense to spend the money to put them out there and/or respond to something. It might be a call for ATVs out on the Cole property, it might be a call for somebody who's hurt in the forest, that we need to go out to that, too. So yes, it'll be a dual use, if that makes sense.
And then this said, "We will purchase all necessary safety equipment." Do you know how much that might be?
No, they've got to wear helmets and gloves and stuff like that. I don't have an exact cost on that, but we have, you know, that's the normal operating expense for the department. I don't have a number for you right now, but I don't think it'll be, I don't think it'll be that, something we can't overcome.
Okay.
And very similar to other grants, I consider that a lot of grants have you put in what's called like-kind expenses, so you have to put in some part of it, so they'll give you the major part of it. So we didn't ask for the helmets and the gloves. We told them we'd purchase that if they bought the big part.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I think you also mentioned, I forgot to just mention, you mentioned the training. So there is some training required to learn how to safely operate an ATV. That will be provided by officers from the environmental police. It'll come down here and train us here, so.
Is that free?
Yes, they won't be.
Cool.
All right. And as my colleagues have said, thank you for pursuing this grant. I think this will be a great addition. To the Carver Police Department, Mr. Fantasy, do we need a motion to accept this gift?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the gift from AD Makepeace?
I make a motion to accept the grant from AD Makepeace for $26,697 for two ATVs for the police department.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I don't want this to come across as anti-police. I've come across as anti-police before. I will be abstaining. Okay?
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chief Officer Foxon, thank you very much.
Also, I did, we did invite the president from AD Makepeace to come. He's a very humble man. He didn't want to be here tonight for any recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a poll hearing on Wareham Street, and I'll read the poll notice. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22, Chapter 166 of General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing has been scheduled at the Carver Town Hall, 108 Main Street, Town of Carver, Massachusetts, on the 24th day of May 2022 at 6:15 p.m. upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company, DBA, Eversource Energy, and Verizon, New England, for permission to locate and relocate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways, Wareham Street. Eight new poles, number 2496, 2495, 2494, 2493, 2492, 2491, 2490, and 2489, all with anchors. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss this? Is there anyone from Eversource? Welcome. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you. Karen Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions from the board on this?
I'm not sure if it's a question to her, but an observation. It appears based on the plans, these directly correspond with the preliminary subdivision plan that is on the planning board agenda for tonight that has been continued. So the houses that these are proposed to go with have not even gone before the planning board to be approved.
These houses are Form A lots. Is that correct? I'm sorry. Say it again. The houses, if they're cutting up lots on a pre-existing way, which Wareham Street is, then these homes are Form A lots, which stands for Approval Not Required. So the planning board cannot turn down a Form A application.
Okay. I'm just, it's the preliminary subdivision plan on their agenda tonight has been continued, and it cites those lots, those exact lots. So this has not gone before the planning board. My concern is that if we approve the polls tonight, that they will be put in very soon and that something may happen and it may not go through. So I would ask, do we have to approve these before the planning board even discusses them? I mean, it's literally right here. It says continue to June 14th, and it's the same lot numbers. So we would be approving polls for something they haven't discussed.
I'm sorry.
Nope. Go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
If we decide, could we approve pending planning board approval of those lots?
That was my second question. If we have to take action tonight, which I would prefer to table it for the future, but if we have to take action tonight, I would like to see us do something like Jim suggested, that approved, conditioned, you know, final approval by planning board and all permits granted for the homes, you know, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Building Commission, make sure these homes actually get approved.
Mr. Fantasy, is that a legal motion? Can we do that?
Yeah, I think you can have a contingent upon any issues with the planning board.
And I do think the representative from Eversource came in tonight. I think rather than make her come back again once the planning board holds the hearing, yeah, I think it's reasonable to grant that, make that motion.
Can we, we need some sort of surety because Eversource has in the past put up polls before they were needed. And I have a fear that is based on past practice. I have seen it multiple times, not just here, but in other towns. Polls have gone up very, very early, and some have ended up not even being needed, and they've been left there.
But again, this would be a conditional motion based on the approval of those Form A lots at the planning board hearing. And as we know, they don't even need to approve the Form A lots.
Can we make sure the line department knows to not go put them up?
Like, so are you saying that they're hearing, the planning board is meeting tonight?
I think what happened was they were hearing tonight, the hearing was tonight, but it got postponed to a future date.
Oh, okay. All right. And did you know when the future date was?
This says continuance requested until 6:14, and it was just preliminary subdivision plan, so.
I mean, I could certainly, you know, note that until we hear back after June 14th.
If you could just notify folks to stay in touch with the town administrator on this and the planning board, and we'll update you.
I have a comment. Just to avoid a long, drawn-out discussion on this next topic, I just want you to know that the town has designated Wareham Street as a scenic road, which means that when you are going to, if you're going to cut and remove trees for the poles, you actually have to get the consent of the planning board and the tree warden. Just a heads up.
So...
So-
And our tree warden is our deputy director of operations and maintenance, John Woods.
So I'm sure that they've dealt with John Woods before. So you're saying that we need to talk to both of those people before?
You actually need a public hearing. If the trees are on the road, of a scenic road, if it's in the public way, then you have to have a public hearing. This Mass General Law, which section here?
Would you suggest we do a site visit then, before, so we have an idea if that's even going to be part of it, Sarah?
I don't think it concerns us so much as it does the planning board.
Because if we're approving that a pole can go here without even knowing that trees are around it, do you think we should even know if that would be coming down the pipeline?
I think we have a town planner who will know this.
Okay.
And if not, we can, Mr. Fennessy, I'm sure we'll let him know. I have the section, but not the law. Anyway. Oh, Chapter 40, Section 15C. That's what it is. I feel sure that Mr. Bot will be on top of this.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments?
Yeah, the only time we would step in would be if there was no planning board.
So you're saying that we need to have a public hearing with the planning board?
With the planning board and the tree warden, who is John Woods. Yes. If there are trees that are going to come down on the public way that's been designated-
Not trimmed.
-scenic road. No, not trimmed, just taken down. Well, it says including cutting and removal of trees, so.
So who makes that final decision? I mean, how are they going to-
Sorry?
How will they come to that decision? I mean, is that your tree warden?
Mass General Law specifies that the planning board and the tree warden hold a public hearing if people are going to cut trees down on scenic roads.
Okay. So we cut them down?
Cut them down. It says, it says actually cutting or removal of trees. Again, I'm not trying to hold this up.
I think you need to have your folks read the, read Mass General Law and follow up as appropriate.
Yeah, because there was a big, a big bruja on Indian Street. I'm just giving you a heads up to let you know. So it's Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C.
Mr. Carter, do you have something?
Yeah, it just seems like this contingent vote now might have another issue with the guys, the things that Sarah just brought up. So do we know if these are Form A lots beyond a shadow of a doubt?
I don't, but looking at the picture, it looks like they are. It looks like they're just chopping up Wareham Street, but I don't know. Jen said it's a subdivision plan.
And again, Mr. Fennessy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but this is really a poll location hearing.
Yes.
Correct?
That's all it's about.
That's what this is, yeah. So it's not, that's all it is.
But it's associated with 10 houses that haven't even gone before the planning board.
Right. But so this doesn't have to do with whether or not we like polls or whether we like Form A lots, which I don't.
Well, I know, but it's for houses.
There's nothing to do with all that. And if they are Form As, they don't even need planning board's approval. So this is a poll location. I'm just trying to give Ms. Johnson a heads up in the event that, you know, they have to put a poll where this one tree is, here's what they need to do, just so they dot their i's and cross their t's.
So if we go through this process and it goes through planning and whatnot, and they decide that they need to have nine polls or seven polls, does it come back to us?
They would come back and they need another poll. They would have to come back, and we'd have to have another poll hearing.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve.
Contingent at all, or just?
Well, we can make a contingent if you want. I mean, they already know they have to go to the planning board, and I've informed this lady of what other things they need to do.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Is that contingent upon planning board approval to build the homes that these are being associated with?
That wasn't my motion, but if you want to make that, that's up to you.
Well, yeah, I would say approving, approving the, okay. I would add the polls that are necessary to provide electric service to 11 new homes on Wareham Street in Carver, like pending approval by necessary boards and committees for said homes.
Well, I mean, they have a, the poll hearing references specific polls, so I don't think the motion would be to, polls necessary to complete, they've specified the polls. It's in the-
I know, but they'll put them up early. They won't wait till the houses are approved. You're going to end up with polls on Wareham Street without houses there. And if it's a scenic road, do you really want them up and take the chance?
As Sarah's let them know, they need to have a public hearing. Any further?
Well, should we just make a contingent upon approval by the planning board and just leave it at that?
Ms. Hewens, do you-
Again, it's one of the ironies of our state. It's approval not required.
Right. That's true.
In our stance. However you guys want to word it, that's fine.
Well, we have a motion and a second before the board. So if we want to amend it, we would need a, we would need an amended motion. Right now, we have a motion and a second before the board.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion contingent on approval by the planning board, because we don't know if 100% sure that these are the lots, like, just to be safe.
So for clarification, approval of the planning board on the lots, on the houses, or they don't have, they're not going to prove the location of the polls?
Right.
That's what you're deciding right here.
You mean that they, they, approval of the permits? General, what's the official thing that they're saying there? Approval of the building permits?
The Eversource letter says these new polls are necessary to provide electric service to 11 new homes on Wareham Street in Carver.
I mean, what's the planning board? What do they have as their agenda item?
Preliminary subdivision plan.
So approval of the, what she just said.
Subdivision plan?
Yeah. I think that makes it pretty simple.
Ms. Hewens made a motion, and you seconded that motion, so.
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. So now we have, and I'm unclear what the new motion is.
New motion is to approve the poll request contingent on the planning board approving this subdivision plans at their next, at the designated meeting.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Thank you.
Okay. Can I just, will it be minutes for the meeting that I can look at or take to my-
Yes.
Definitely. Ms. Weston will-
Ms. Weston, can you get her the minutes when they're available?
Yep.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Leave your information with Ms. Weston if she doesn't have it, and she'll give it to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is a public hearing on the Little Red, on revoking the liquor license for Little Red Smokehouse. And there was a letter sent out to Mr. Vogel. I'll read that letter.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms.?
It's only 6:24.
Ah, that is correct. Thank you for letting me know, Mr. Corbo. We're moving too fast here this evening, so why don't we skip over that? And what we will do is go down to the next agenda items below that, the 645 agenda items. So our next scheduled meeting is June 7th, 2022, and we have approval and minutes, the approval of the minutes of May 3rd, 2022. Is there a motion there?
I move we approve the minutes of May 3rd, 2022.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It is unanimous. Approval and release of the executive session minutes of April 8th, 2022. Is there a motion there?
I'll make a motion that we approve and release the executive session minutes of 4/8/22.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll abstain.
All right.
I believe I wasn't at that meeting.
All right.
Trying to double check that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Well, we have no opposed, two extensions, correct? All right. Thank you. We have a request for a one-day special license for the St. John's Club on June 23rd to 24th, from noon to 11:00 PM each day. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the request for a one-day special license for the St. John's Club, June 23rd and June 24th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It is unanimous. All right. Select board notes, there are none, so why don't we go to our select board community announcements, and then we'll go back to our public hearing. Mr. Carter, why don't we start with you this evening?
Sure. I'd just like to let everyone know that coming up is the Second Annual Jack Quinley Scholarship Cornhole Tournament, starting on June 11th at the Carver Sportsman's Club. I think it's a great cause. I recommend anybody that can go should go.
All right. Ms. Bogart?
The townwide yard sale is June 25th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Registration is open now. CarverMA.gov for details.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman?
I'm all set for tonight. Well, thank you.
All right. Ms. Hewens?
Just wanted to remind people that the Memorial Day Parade is set for this coming Monday, May 30th, and I think we're stepping off at-
9:30, I believe.
9:30. And that's from the-
Sons of Veterans Hall.
Sons of Veterans Hall, thank you. Right across the street and down from us. I hope everyone can make it.
All right. Great. Thank you. And I have a couple of things this evening. First of all, the planning board is still accepting applications for a planning board alternate. There is information on the website. And Ms. Weston, correct me if I'm wrong, they're accepting applications till the end of May, correct?
Yep.
All right. And also, Eversource is having a webinar for folks who are maybe having trouble paying their energy bill. So if you have any interest in that webinar, you can get information at Eversource.com/billhelp, or you could call 866-861-6225. And I believe that information is also on the town website.
Yes.
So with that, it is 6:28, and why don't we take a couple of minute resource, and we will come back and hold our last public hearing of the evening. All right. I'll call our meeting back to order, and at this point, we are off to our sixth, our six, I misplaced my agenda.
6:30.
6:30, thank you. My 6:30 agenda item. This is a public hearing on the withdrawal of the liquor license for the Little Red Smokehouse. I'll read the letter that was sent out to Mr. Vogel. This letter is to inform you that the select board voted unanimously at their meeting held on May 3rd, 2022 to hold a hearing in regards to the revocation of your licenses for South Main Management Corporation, DBA Little Red Smokehouse, located at 145 South Main Street, Carver, Mass. The details on this are as follows. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the Carver Town Hall, 108 Main Street, Carver, Mass, meeting room number one, located on the second floor. The select board will be discussing and voting on the revocation of the following. All alcoholic beverage license number 00035-RS-0174, Carver Liquor License Number Four, for violations, non-payment of license, non-renewal of liquor liability insurance. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this? Anyone from Mr. Vogel or the Little Red Smokehouse? All right. Mr. Corbo? Do you have anything?
Thank you. Through your Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corbo, I'm sorry. Could you move the mic closer to you? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Through your Mr. Chair. Just to give the board some of the background here, I would submit that the following findings would be in order. Prior to December 31st of 2021, South Main Management Corp., DBA, the Little Red Smokehouse, held a license to sell alcoholic beverages on the premise and a common victueller's license for its business at 2145 South Main Street. On or about November 3rd, the owner submitted an application for renewal of those licenses. The application, however, was incomplete because it was not accompanied by the required fees. The owner's liquor liability insurance policy expired on March 15th, 2022, and no renewal policy has been submitted to the board. The business appears to be closed to the public. The town has made several attempts to contact the owner about renewing the licenses with no response. The owner did not appear at this hearing, renew the license, or present a plan for the future. Therefore, it would be open to the board to find that the owner does not plan to continue the licensed business.
All right. And anything from the board? Any comments? All right. Mr. Corbo, I know you earlier had provided the board with a couple of possible motions. Would you recommend that we utilize option number two?